We're graduating.
Taking wheels off, huh?
You got us here, we'll guide you. No, this is the part, this is the part you. No, I'm glad.
Did you and Watson call each other? Right.
We did. But, uh, no, I know it's, we'll have to follow up with you. It's your responsibility.
We're in North Shore. It is. Are you liking or are you saying?
I have no idea.
If it is, I'll order.
Okay, right.
I don't know.
Just while we were having this conversation, the lot that we did not survive on.
Yeah, we did. Yes, we approved all that. Yes, ma'am.
I thought it was turned down. Did you think it was turned down?
I thought, unfortunately, I was rooting for it, but I think that it was turned down, but the chair's passed, I believe.
Yes, I agree.
Oh, all right, we'll have to look back, we'll look at the minutes. Yeah, thank you. Do you want to switch with me?
What?
Because that's the broken one, right?
I don't know.
Oh, oh, I think you said it was just broken.
No, it came out. I just don't like it.
Yeah, you're, you're.
You made it, Mr. Deacon.
I did, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Excellent. My call looks like it's three minutes early.
Deja vu from I take it off and change it again. Greg, how are you?
Turn it back an hour.
Something like that.
Okay, glasses. After the meeting, would you signature on the chair? Would you signature on the? Have you referred to me this after the meeting or should I pass it to after we finish? That sounds great. That's what Jill said.
But in, everyone, welcome. Uh, if we could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Uh, if we could have the roll call, please?
Gardner?
Here.
Christie?
Present.
Deacon?
Here.
Pomelo?
Here.
Strubing?
Yep.
Thomas?
Here.
And Watson?
Here.
All are present.
Excellent. Previous minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the September ninth meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Petitions and communications, I see none. Uh, report of the town manager.
Hi, everyone. So staff did meet this month and finance was working on, uh, closing up the tax bills of fiscal year and we're meeting with our auditor right now. HR, uh, was able to, uh, have a vacation and two weddings and her family, so she was out for a couple of weeks. Uh, we do have some new hires, so she was helpful in getting that paperwork. The fire chief, uh, was also on vacation. He asked me to give a reminder that the safety fair is Saturday and happy to share that, um, with help from staff, um, that he was able to get a grant for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for, uh, power load stretchers. So that's a huge, uh, a huge bonus. He also, uh, keeps his eye on some online auctions we, um, partaken and he got, uh, cones, um, usually they're thirty dollars apiece. He got, and he doesn't even know, hundreds of them for like seven hundred dollars. So for peanuts, we were able to get, um, fire, public safety, I mean, perks and rec, everyone uses them. He did say that, uh, if any counselors in the past, people have written checks to support the safety fair, uh, bicycles, T-shirts, pumpkins, uh, he would love to accept a donation. Uh, Public Works working on Middle Road and Culverts, uh, well, Middle Road and Rubber Road, those culverts are finished. So thanks to Public Works for that. I went down and watched myself. I was in awe of how large they were. Parks and Rec, um, with the shutdown, they're hoping for the land and water conservation grant. Uh, Halloween is going to be at Georgie Jack this year. Um, they have some online, um, information if you want to learn more about that. And fortunately slash unfortunately, we did get some, um, cameras for our parks because we've been having issues, but hopefully a little safer now for everyone. Uh, planning is working on the grant for Brownfield, busy with the Old Bridge Church and again, fire and working on implementation of the comp plan. Assisting was on vacation. Clark, um, have been busy with our ballots and getting ready for voting. I'm happy to share they've been taking some training courses that have been worthwhile. And in code, we have a new hire, a licensed plumber who is helping with the increase in developments. And lastly, uh, I had met with the superintendent last week, um, and they do need a, um, if any counselors want to be on the budget board, they do need someone on there. They would like someone to represent. They also said they, um, will come to us as they've done in years past, but they expect an increase due to capital expenses, facilities of the schools and stuff like that. Tomorrow, we are having, uh, Bonny Eagle Middle School come in. Uh, Council Beacon, I know this is near and dear to you, so we have a hundred students coming for most of the day tomorrow. We divide them into four groups and we teach them all about municipal government, so they'll spend time with fire. They'll have a finance session, Parks and Rec, John does a session with them, uh, teamwork and grounding roads, like, it's a fun exercise. You do fun things with them so that they really get it. They end their day with a canine demo and we, um, get pizza loads, gives us a discount, so we have pizza with them. That is it. Is this summary for me?
Excellent. Uh, what grade?
It's Mr. Trowell. I think it's seventh graders.
There you go.
Thank you. Um, awesome. I want to say thank you to the town manager and everybody, uh, that works, uh, for underneath her. Um, sounds like a lot of good things are going on in the town, so. Um, I see there are no public hearings, uh, so we'll move on to committee reports. Uh, and I will start with appointments committee. Uh, we have nothing to, to put out, uh, and same thing with personnel committee. Uh, so we'll go to Mr. Christie for, uh, Portland One District. Is there anything to report?
No.
Okay, moving on, uh, to Mr. Deacon for a transportation policy committee.
Uh, we are planning a meeting on the twenty-third of October, Thursday at four P M. Uh, two things that I have in mind are the discussion of the Route Thirty Five Carter, which we had a some prior discussion, and also, uh, potentially to think about, uh, the town of, uh, adopting something that's done in the town of Wilmington, which is a summer bus for getting kids to, uh, summer life programs. Similarly, the cemetery committee also has a meeting scheduled for the thirtieth of October, the first ever committing, meeting of the cemetery commission, uh, committee, and, uh, we'll talk about the committee's organization mission, uh, possible sources of grants, uh, cemeteries that are online but owned by the water district, involving the public schools potentially, or whatever else people might come up with on the thirtieth at four. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, capital improvements, uh, Mr. Pomelo?
We have a met.
A met? Okay. Uh, and finance committee?
Uh, we'll meet.
Uh, Mr. Strubing?
We'll meet, uh, later this month. Uh, Tasha mentioned they've got audits going on right now.
Meeting later this month?
Yep. I believe it's later this month. They have to double check the calendar.
Okay. Uh, economic development committee, Ms. Thomas?
The economic development committee met last month with the ordinance committee. We had a joint meeting to start going over the commercial standards in the Standish Corner District. Our next meeting, joint meeting to work on that further is on the twenty-first at four P M. Right here, everyone is invited and we encourage participation.
Excellent. Uh, and ordinance committee with Mr. Watson?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to mention that we met with economic development. Also, we also had a separate ordinance, uh, committee meeting, which we talked about food trucks and expanding a different area for, uh, them to host their food events, uh, as well as getting the town more ready to open up for more businesses. And ironically, on the way here, I got a call from a potential, uh, business who wants to see if they could be, um, available for Standish.
Outstanding. Great. Um, great. Um, moving on, there are no, uh, con- content calendar. Uh, no unfinished business, so we're going to move right on to new business.
Sure. We start off with ninety-four dash twenty-five, authorize Standish PTO to sell raffle tickets at the transfer station on Moody Road. Whereas the Standish PTO is a nonprofit organization whose fundraising efforts serve the residents of Standish. Now be it ordered that the Standish Town Council authorizes Standish PTO to sell raffle tickets at the transfer station on, on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, and November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Further order that the director of public works will direct the Standish PTO members where they can set it up in the area of the transfer station.
Um, this is just, uh, the standard, um, fundraising events that we have had to, uh, come up on the transportation, so, um, are there any, uh, staff comments on this? See none? Uh, any public comments on this? And none there? Any, uh, council comments?
I just got one.
Yes, sir.
Looks like they're going to be raffling off a, uh, twenty-five Polaris Sportsman for twenty bucks a ticket. I think that's amazing. Hopefully not many people buy them, so I'll buy the only one maybe. Uh, let's, let's hope they, uh, get out there and, uh, get some tickets sold. I think it's great. They're doing this and all proceeds are going to the PTO.
Perfect. I think it's great. All right, uh, roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Unanimous, so passes.
And then moving on to ninety-five dash twenty-five, authorize the Rotary Club of Sebago Lake to utilize Sebago Lake Station landing parking area during their annual ice fishing derby. Order that the town of Standish grants approval for the Rotary Club of Sebago Lake to use the standard Lake Station landing parking area during their annual ice fishing derby to be held on February fourteenth and the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-six. And further order that a no parking restriction will be in effect on both sides of Chadmore Road, Route Thirty-Five, Maple Street, and the town's right-of-way at Sebago Lake Station Landing during this event and that the coordinators of the event will place the necessary signage. In addition, the Rotary Club will have, uh, portable toilets placed at the boat launch during the event.
Excellent. Uh, this is, uh, the annual, uh, fishing derby, um, that they've had for, I believe, like, twenty-five years and, uh, we do have a representative. I think that wants to come up and talk and probably give us the correct number of years.
So, good evening. My name is Robin Mullins. I am the current president of the Sebago Lake Rotary Club. And yes, this is going to be our twenty-fifth year, so we are super excited to have this event. Uh, and I wanted to just talk a little bit about the event because people think, oh, well, it's a fundraiser for the Rotary Club. And absolutely, it is a fundraiser for the Rotary Club, but it is so much more than that. The reason it was originally started was not only for fundraising, but it's to get the invasive fish out of Sebago Lake, which we all know, we don't want the toad in there. So the idea is for people to come and get as much toad out of there as possible. And even though there's rumors that the toad come out and they sit on the ice, that is not true. We actually want the toad to come out and be brought to us at our weigh stations because we then take that fish and we take it to, uh, a food processor in Por- uh, Portland and that, uh, is, uh, processed and given to local food pantries. So it's also an opportunity because we get lots of fishermen from out of state, so it's also a really good opportunity for tourism, um, in the state as well. So there's a lot of different reasons why it's important for people to participate in the derby. What I'm asking you guys to do is to pray for ice. Because it is a much better event if the Sebago Lake freezes over. Just so people do know, we still hold the event even if, uh, Sebago doesn't freeze over. We will have any of the lakes, uh, and ponds in Cumberland County that can be used for ice fishing if for some reason the, uh, Mother Nature doesn't participate and the, uh, ice doesn't freeze on Sebago Lake. So, don't know if anyone has any questions or anything about the event. Again, very excited this, this might be our twenty-fifth year. Yes.
I have a brief comment. Uh, I've read that, uh, climate change and environmental changes, that the salmon over here are having a tough time in Sebago and getting rid of fish like that enhances the ability of fish like the landlocked salmon to survive. So it's an important event for a number of reasons. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you. Very, thank you for, uh, coming and explaining that. Uh, are there any other public comments on that? See none? Any, uh, other council comments? Yes?
Um, I just have one question, Mr. Chair. Um, with the no parking restriction, uh, on those dates, is this something that historically has generated a thief for the town?
A thief of the town?
Is there a, is there a thief? Is, is it an applied thing? It's just, okay. Thank you.
I don't believe so, right? Uh, roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
All right, so ninety-six dash twenty-five, uh, disperse funds from the Gertrude and Hasty Fund to the trustees of the First Parish Meeting House. Whereas in nineteen eighty-six, Gertrude and Hasty left funds in trust for maintenance of the Old Bridge Church, which were accepted by a vote of town meeting. And whereas the Gertrude and Hasty Trust provides that the funds are held by the town and that the town shall use the income and in its discretion, the principle for maintenance of the Old Bridge Church as a historical museum. And whereas the trustees of the First Parish Meeting House, AKA trustees of the Old Bridge Church, who are responsible for the maintenance of the Old Bridge Church, have submitted to the town council a request to utilize these funds for repairs to the Old Bridge Church. Now be it ordered that the Standish Town Council disperses fifteen thousand dollars to the trustees of the First Parish Meeting House as requested in their letter dated September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, a copy which is attached to this order.
Um, Scott, do you want to, do you have any info on this?
I can say, uh, just quickly that, um, the council does manage this trust with, you know, staff's assistance and the Old Bridge Church is asking for funds out of this account. Um, I believe total in the account is sixteen thousand two hundred plus, not the full amount, but, um, um, they are requesting this money for repairs, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. If you have any questions about the repairs, somebody is here to answer those questions as well, but that's pretty much it.
Yep. Great. Um, moving on, is there any, uh, public comments? No public comments? Um, are there any council comments?
How much do we have in the, uh?
I think he's, he said about sixteen thousand.
Right. I go by that little corner. I'm just a stat. I'm afraid, afraid of that, but that's, I'm a contractor.
Perfect. Any comments? Other comments? Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Correct, yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven guesses.
Unanimous, so passes. Next?
Ninety-seven dash twenty-five, title of Standish orders of town council authorizing issue of grant anticipation note in the, uh, principal amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Whereas on June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, at an annual town meeting referendum duly called and held, the voters of the town of Standish, the town, approved question five of the warrant for said town meeting, which authorizes the issuance of six hun- hundred and fifty thousand dollars in bonds and notes for the replacement of the River Road Culvert, the project. Whereas on April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, the town entered into a grant agreement with the State Department Transportation, the state, under the municipal stream.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Um, would either one, anybody over there want to have a comment on this?
I'll just mention that, uh, it's pretty self-explanatory. This is anticipation of the grant we're waiting to receive from the state.
Okay.
We're at the mercy of the state, so we need these funds, uh, just to get it by.
Uh, the grant has already been submitted for reimbursement. We just don't know the timeline on the state paying us. The project is complete.
Yep.
They will just pay the rest of the bills for the project.
So basically, if we approve this, we're just kind of borrowing the money. Once the money comes in, we'll put it right back.
Correct.
Great, thank you. Uh, are there any public comments? See none? Are there any council comments?
Yes.
Two hundred thousand. Is that the, uh?
That's the amount, yes.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven guesses.
Unanimous, so passes. Next?
Ninety-eight dash twenty-five, town of Standish order of town council authorizing issue of tax anticipation note in the principal amount of, uh, one million, seven hundred fourteen dollars. Be it ordered by the town council of this town of Standish, the town, as follows. One, that the town treasurer is authorized to arrange for the issuance and sale of a tax anticipation note of the town, the principal amount up to one million.
I'll make the motion that we leave the reading.
Okay.
All in favor? Unanimous? Uh, again, are there any staff comments?
I just mentioned that this is something we do every year to, um, help with cash flow until next month when we receive our, uh, first round of tax money. So I'll pay the bills.
Got to pay the bills. Any, uh, public comments? And council comments? Yeah?
Um, the one point seven million, is that to cover just bills for this month or is that?
Yes.
Right. Any other comments? Questions? Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven guesses.
Unanimous, so passes. Next?
So ninety-nine dash twenty-five, approving the expenditure of a portion of funds from the Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District Number One in Development Programs Project Cost Account for feasible study regarding two parallel access routes along Route Twenty-Five. Whereas the town council on February eleventh, twenty-fourteen, approved the Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District Number One, Standish Corner, the, uh, TIF district, and Development Program and created the town's project cost account in which tax increment revenues from the TIF district have been deposited. And whereas the town council on July nine, twenty-twenty-four, approved an amendment to the development program to update original project cost estimates and add eligible project costs. And whereas at the twenty-twenty-five annual town meeting, it was voted to appropriate up to two hundred thousand dollars from the town project cost account to be used at the municipal office service discretion. And whereas to date, uh, the town council has approved the expenditure of up to thirty-five thousand dollars of the revenues on deposit in the town's project cost account. Whereas the town council now desires to approve the expenditure of additional ten thousand dollars of revenues on the deposit in the town's project cost account. Now therefore be it ordered that the town expend up to ten thousand dollars from the town's project cost account created pursuant to the Municipal Development and Tax Increment Finance District Number One, Standish Corner and Development Program to pay for a feasible study regarding two parallel access routes along Route Twenty-Five. Be it further order that the town manager is authorized to enter in such agreements on behalf of the town as she deems appropriate in order to carry out such work.
Still have a problem?
This comes from the council workshop on the Route Twenty-Five corridor. Uh, based on public comment and council comment, I've been asking about, uh, what I call a bypass route, so connection points. So we need something that would start by the Gorm Town Line. And I'm just using rough reference points, come up by seat hall, something that would start by the Gorm Town Line and come up something here by town hall, instead of expanding the corridor that we would already have. Uh, town staff is against this because, uh, we're not in favor. Looking this because of the costs. In my opinion, that you're going to find that the cost outweighs for what we could possibly do within our own town right-of-way. Uh, but we're putting this order in front of you. If you want to see that number, we will, it's going to cost ten thousand dollars to see that number and to look at options. I think our best option is to stay within our current corridor because road costs these days are anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars a foot without box culvert. So that's six thousand feet for a six million dollar project if we did what they, Gorm Palmer said all at once. We'd have a lot more than over a mile of road to build without box culverts and without purchasing the land. We don't own that land to put that new road in. So you're talking tens of millions of dollars, but if the council wants to see that number, it's a ten thousand dollar cost initiative to see that number and what will cost.
Um, so are you, uh, are you suggesting that we vote this down?
Town staff is not in favor of this, but based on the council comments from before, we thought we needed to bring an order in front of you to say, if this, if you want to see that number, if this is what it's going to cost to see the number. So if you don't want to see the number, go ahead and, go, go now.
Right. Um, great. Any other staff comments? Any public comments? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Uh, please state your name and your address and, and your comment.
My name is Vicki Higgins, one ninety-eight Lake Road, and I'm in agreement with what John Carl said. I think the expenditure, uh, to do the study is money not well spent. Um, it's not rocket science. Um, and the biggest expense, as he said, is purchasing land from landowners. So we have enough to contend with for costs and, and other projects that are well-suited for what it would cost for this study. So I urge the council, non, to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any council comments? Uh, Lisa?
Um, the, the bypass would bypass the business district that we're trying to build up, so I don't think it would be a good idea either.
Mr. Deacon?
Uh, the, uh, the land that there would be adjacent or on the road, uh, what is the zoning for that land?
So right, right now, you're saying the new land being purchased.
Yes, where, where the road, the connecting road would be.
I, I can, I can maybe tell you. We don't know where that road would be. That's where this would look at.
What is the general area? Is it industrial use or commercial or what?
It's mostly, it would be a lot of probably, uh, Standish Corner District, so the form-based, and maybe some other residential uses.
So if somebody were to develop a business use there, uh, could we use, uh, that permit process to get the developer to pay the cost of the road instead of the town?
We're currently doing that with housing impact. They are contributing right now towards this corridor. I'm just using whole numbers, five brother subdivision that was approved on eighty line, I believe. The impact fee was eighty to ninety thousand. I don't recall right off that it's going possibly towards that project, uh, based on, that's why we did the original study, so we had. Based on, that's why we did the original study, so we had a number to be able to charge to developers. There's a math formula that's done by Gorham Palmer, how much each unit has to contribute to that. So we have a PDBank that we have to spend within ten years if we are gonna use that money. Otherwise, that money, I believe, does go back to the developers if it's not spent within ten years.
So if, so that money might be available to put towards the cost?
Correct.
But if somebody else came along who wanted to develop that land, would they have to pay us fees to?
So it goes back ten years as well, so say the project was built out. Somebody put a business in eight years, we go back to, if that was approved right now, they can go back up to ten years and they have to contribute towards that.
I see, okay, thank you.
Any comments?
I just, when we looked at Gorham Palmer in twenty fourteen, the village was different then, and the traffic was different then. We were looking at coming in around the Sandish House of Pizza, walking back in behind there, behind Hanniford's. And back then, the land wasn't being used for what it is today, obviously, the land has changed since. I agree, this is an outdated study and obviously probably doesn't fit with the current piece of standard, I don't think.
What land would it be that we'd be buying or have to buy or buy from anyone else?
We don't, we don't know that until they really look at that.
Yeah. And I would just say that, trying not, I appreciate the comments and stuff, like trying to divert traffic through the business centers. Sometimes not a great idea, but sometimes it doesn't hurt, I know Gorham said the same thing, but the bypass hasn't actually hurt him, it's kinda helped him actually, so. Just for proof of thought, but I don't see any other comments. Roll call?
Gardner?
No.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
No.
Homolo?
No.
Strubing?
No.
Thomas?
No.
And Watson?
No.
Six notes, one yes.
Passes. Tails, I bet.
Alright. Moving on to one hundred dash twenty-five, Amendments to Sandish Town Code, Chapter one eighty-seven, regarding mobile food services. The Town of Sandish hereby ordains that Chapter one eighty-seven, licenses and permits of the Sandish Town Code being hereby amended as follows. Additions are underlined, deletions are struck out. And this is under Chapter one eighty-seven, licenses and permits, Articles Two, specific provisions, mobile food services. MFSU's license under this section may operate at the following town-owned lands. Memorial Park, six seventy Osippee Trail West. And then added to the order would be number two, Johnson Field, eighty-nine Chitham Road.
Any staff comments?
This is just adding, Johnson Field is an authorized area for food trucks to set up. On a first come, first served basis, if it wasn't a town-sponsored event, it would only be one at a time, but if it, you know, if it was a town event, there'd be multiple.
Okay, great. Any public?
Yeah, sorry, Parks and Rec has been using, if they're not here tonight, for when they have special events and sporting events. It's great for the parents who are there for their kids for soccer, so it's been, it's been highly used and loved thus far.
Great. Public comments? Council comments?
One question. How many parking lots are at Johnson Field? We're allowed one truck for parking lots, how many lots are there?
There's only one, you got the entry parking and then you go around the back.
Yeah, there's only one lot at Johnson.
Oh, actually is.
Is that one parking lot, or is that considered two? Just one lot connected by a drive?
I would consider that one, I'd consider that one.
So it's laid out somewhere that that is one lot?
Well, it's one lot by the town, owned by the town, so I mean, if it's one parking area, it's not separate, I would say it's one lot.
Sweet, thank you.
Any consideration of the boat launch, there are various activities held there, maybe as an enhancement to some of the things and activities at the boat launch, to consider having a food truck there?
The boat launch would be trickier, the town owns a hundred foot right of way into the boat launch, but outside of that hundred foot right of way is Port Almira District. And my guess is what, which would not be minimal to food trucks on their, on their way. But I don't know, it would be tricky for that to operate in that hundred foot right of way, I think. When you're, you know, egress and ingress would be tough.
I understand, thank you.
Phil?
I have a lot of concern about, obviously, the trucks, but while we're told there's only one truck at a time can be there because unlike Memorial Field, Johnson has limited parking. We don't have, so basically, if we're gonna have five or six, seven trucks in there on every, you know, then to try to find parking for the people to come there for pickleball or for the skate park or whatever. So we had concerns, I think, about this in the committee, and we were assured this, I don't know how they're gonna police it, I guess first come, first served, but I'm a little nervous on that because some guy could show up and get out of the place all summer if he chose to. But there were some food truck vendors at our meeting and they said that they would work and make sure that didn't happen. I don't know how they can do that, but hopefully they do and we don't get any feedback from. But supposedly, there'll only be one truck there at a time unless there's a Sandish-sponsored event. And even then, I'm kinda concerned because if it's a Sandish-sponsored event, that means there's gonna be a lot more cars showing up for that event. So I think we gotta be very careful with this, but keep an eye on it and see what happens. I have no problem trying.
I'm just gonna say one thing, and then I'll go to you. Cause Phil brought it up about the policing, and that was my call, my question. Who would be, like, who's gonna be kinda patrolling that, making sure? Cause if somebody sets up and then somebody else comes in to go set up, and then there's a fight between vendors or something like that, who's gonna be responsible for that?
I mean, we would, we obviously, like anything in town, you know, we operate basically on complaints. We don't really go patrol a lot, like that. So if we get a complaint, the court officer would obviously go down there at that time and check it out and see what was going on. You know, we would, we wouldn't possibly think about, if this became, you know, repeated thing, we would think about changing this again.
Okay, so, all right. Mr. Watson?
I was just gonna say, with cuffs closed and now walkers landing closed, the food options for that side of town is pretty limited. So I understand the parking, we definitely need to keep an eye on it, but it'd be welcome to have a place if I don't wanna cook dinner or lunch, I'd go, we go check out.
Mr. Christie?
For years, we had, the holidays down in that area.
And what?
Families came, I cooked, and it was a big event. I used to see a lot of my family and I'd see them in time, they'd come up for that, and they'd come back. And to have that change, it's, it's good notice.
Awesome. Any other comments? Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Homolo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Passes.
And then, one oh one dash twenty-five, Amendments to Sandish Town Code, Chapter one eighty-one, Land Use Article Four, I'm sorry, Article Nine, Board of Appeals Appeal Procedure. The Town of Sandish hereby ordains that Chapter one eighty-one, Land Use Article Nine, Board in Appeals.
Motion to wait for you.
Second. All in favor? Lisa, do you?
No, I, no, I think it could be read, so.
Okay, we'll read it.
The Town of Sandish hereby ordains that Chapter one eighty-one, Land Use Article Nine, Board of Appeals Appeal Procedure of the Sandish Town Code being hereby amended as follows. Additions are underlined, deletions are struck out. This is Chapter one eighty-one, Land Use Article Nine, Board of Appeals Appeal Procedure. And struck out is this sentence here, array of appeal under the provisions of this Part One secured by a vote of the Board of Appeals. And then added, is rights secure under Section one eighty-one dash sixty-four, B, C, and D shall expire if the work or change involved is not commenced within six months of the date of which the appeal is granted. Struck out and added or, if the work or change is not substantially completed within two years of the date on which such appeal is granted. And then this whole nut section is added. Special exception approvals issued under Section one eighty-one dash sixty-four A two shall expire if an application for planning board review of the special exception used site plan review or subdivision plan review is not submitted and deemed complete within six months of the date on which the Board of Appeals approval was granted. Once a complete planning board application is submitted, the Board of Appeals Special Exception Approval will remain valid through the relevant planning board process, which in the case of a proposed mobile home park expansion shall include preliminary and final subdivision plan review, and shall only expire when any planning board approval also expires if granted. If however, the relevant application to the planning board is denied or withdrawn within more than six months after the date of the Board of Appeals Special Exception Approval, that special exception approval shall expire at the time of such denial or withdrawal. Nothing of this section shall be construed to extend the deadline by which a subdivider must submit an application for the final subdivision plan approval under Section one eighty-one dash eighty-two A.
Great.
Yeah.
Any staff comments?
This change was necessary because anything requiring special exception approval of our ordinance was obviously operating under that six month. They only gave them six months to complete both special exception review and planning board review, which is extremely difficult for a large project to do. So we said, if special exception approval is granted, then they have, the longer they submit to the planning board within those six months, they have, you know, whatever time they need to get to the planning board, essentially. So I think, yeah, that's, that's it basically.
Great. Any public comments? Yes sir?
Christopher Strubing, one eighty-eight Lake Road. I think that's a good idea, I was on the planning board and I know how long that process takes, so. Expanding it is a good idea.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any council comments?
Question? Can we get an explanation on what is meant by if no substantial progress is made within two years? What happens? If they started a project, they started whatever they have to start, and it's not done within two years, what does that mean? It's a third line in.
So, if the market change involved is not commenced? I think that just says that, so much to be of grandeur, if a market change comes in within two years of the date. I'd have to read that carefully, just so I didn't get some bad info.
So that's fine, you can look into it and get back to us tomorrow and.
That's all I was thinking. Yeah, don't try and read it and make them understand it really good.
What I mean, what in the past projects have we done that have or haven't been substantially completed within a day?
Solar parks.
Yeah, no, I know, so like, what did we do then?
We kind of ignored it.
I just, throughout the, just the planning board search offers this suggestion, and subject to think about as you're reviewing that, is that substantial progress refers to the point in a project where the work is sufficiently complete to allow the owner to occupy or use the property for its intended purpose, even though some minor work may still be pending. So that's one thing to think about. I would allow you to take additional time to consider that.
And subdivision stuff, refers for me, for infrastructure being substantially complete means that it must be functional. Designed as a function.
Yeah, usually substantially complete means, well, thirty percent, I think, is, I probably did the wrong term.
Okay, does that inspire your question?
Well, so it says it shall expire. The rights secured will expire if that's not substantially completed within two years. So what does that mean?
They have to go back to the board, I think.
So whatever they're working on at the time would just sit until they go through the board process again?
Yeah.
Is that, is that something that needs to be clarified in there?
I don't think so, I think typically developers understand that if they don't, you know, they get approval for something, they need to continue on with the process or start the work. You know, within two years, I think it's below the standard.
Like the trailer park was similar to that, that they had to come back from changing. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
We already had public comments, ma'am, I'm sorry. Any other council comments?
I agree with the language, I think it's gotta be cleaned up because if you go to the Board of Appeals and get your granted appeal, and then two years later, you haven't started this project, then why would you have gone to the appeal first and wasted our time and town's money? So I agree that a two-year number, like I said, and to see a substantial start of the project, but it could be just a homeowner wanting to put an addition on, it's too close to the property, you don't know what it would be. So I think the two-year number works well because it kinda boots them in the butt to get going on a project since we spent time with an appeal. So I get the language, but I think we gotta clean up the wording.
Comments?
I would agree with cleaning up the wording a little bit, as, as is it, as is I find it very confusing.
Okay, I think we could vote on it the way it is, if it doesn't pass. Right, we would bring it back to rewrite? Or do you, can we just rewrite it like we did the last time and then you bring it back? Is that how?
I would just make a motion to send it to, I would just make a motion to send this back to ordinance.
I think you're right, that's right.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to send it back to ordinance.
I'll say, I got it.
Have it rewritten.
Okay, we have a motion to send it back to ordinance, we do have a second, all in favor? That's unanimous, so we'll, we will, that is what we'll do. Before moving on, I just wanna make a comment that when we, when we will, every order we put out to the public, and then we move on to the council comment. If you wanted a keep note of what you wanna ask, if you think of something afterwards, we do have time at the end of the meeting when we do public items, you're more than welcome to come up and talk at that point. Okay, I'm not trying to discard your question or anything, but we've already moved on. Okay, if we go to the next one?
One oh two dash twenty-five, Amendments to Sandish Town Code, Chapter two sixty-three, Vehicles and Traffic, Article One, Parking and Weight Restrictions, Prohibitive Parking. The Town of Sandish hereby ordains that Chapter two sixty-three, Vehicles and Traffic, Article One, Parking and Weight Restrictions, Prohibitive Parking of the Town, of the Sandish Town Code being hereby amended as follows. Additions are underlined, deletions are struck out. That's Chapter two sixty-three, Vehicles and Traffic, Article One, Parking and Weight Restrictions, Section two sixty-three dash one, Prohibitive Parking. It shall be unlawful to park any vehicle within the public way at the following locations. G, on the lake side of Wards Cove Road for its entire length. And then added to that is, and, on the land side of Wards Cove Road from the southerly intersection with Route one fourteen through the intersection with Sandbar Road.
Staff comment?
This is basically just extending the no parking zone, so a citizen came in concerned being able to pull out a Sandbar Road because people were parking there, blocking their view, coming down Wards Cove Road. And it's just extending the same side of no parking all the way to Route one fourteen.
Public comments? Council comments? Yes, Phil?
Yeah, what this was bothering was also fire rescue from turning into Sandbar Road. And Wards Cove is a very narrow road. And what happens in the summer is all summer residents and a lot of rentals up there. And they'll rent a house and there'll be eight different families show up, so there's no parking, so they park along the road. So it just gets to a point for five to six months in the summer, it's almost impossible. to go through there. With my oil truck, if I go through with a truck, no cars could pass from the other way. So this is, just cleans it up so that you can move traffic a little better through that section.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Homelow?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Unanimous passes?
And then, moving on to one oh three dash twenty-five, authorize a temporary no parking restriction on the east side of Manchester Road on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, whereas River Meadows Drive being a popular destination on-
Make a motion or we either wait for reading.
A second?
Second, all in favor? Unanimous? This is like the third time we've already seen this, I think it's just to finalize it now, and I believe it's just during Halloween and for one-time event. Well, there's trick or treating and all that stuff, it gets really jammed up in there, so I think it's a great idea to, to move this forward. Are there any public comments? Council comments? None, roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Homelow?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
And moving on to one oh four dash twenty-five, adoption of two thousand twenty-five Standish Comprehensive Plan, whereas the town of, the town has completed the process of preparing a comprehensive plan pursuant to the Maine Growth Management Act thirty-a, MRS, section forty-three twenty-one, including by I designating and establishing a comprehensive plan committee to oversee the development of the comprehensive plan and to solicit and consider a broad range of public review and comment during its development. Following the procedures under Growth Management Act for citizen participation, public notice and public hearing, and three, securing a determination from the Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation, Forestry, that the proposed comprehensive plan is complete and consistent with the Growth Management Act. Now therefore be it ordered that the two thousand twenty-five Standish Comprehensive Plan be adopted in the form attached here too.
Staff comments?
This is just a formality really for council to adopt their comprehensive plan of and finalized. So right now, it's just, there's a link on our website to it, but we hope to have our copies available for anyone that's going to look at it. But again, the digital version is currently on the website and it's been finalized and everyone's ready to go.
Great. Public comment? None, council comments? Mr. Watson?
Yeah, I was on the comprehensive thank committee, so I just want to give a shout out to all the other members that participated, all the input that we got through those members, all the input we got through the surveys and the workshops that we had here, really helped us kind of steer where we wanted to go with it. Personally, I think it's a great plan. Nothing's a perfect plan, but I think it's a good foundation to work from and work up from. And if we do passes tonight, I hope we can all work together to then make the ordinances changes and, and, you know, move those forward so we can have a town that we're all proud of.
Well said.
I just want to thank the people who were on the comprehensive plan committee. There was a lot of work put into this plan, and because of that, the state accepted it without any issue, which makes our job a lot easier. So I appreciate the time that the people spent on it.
Well said. Any other comments? Roll call?
Can I just, I agree, and I want to thank Zach, come on. Zach was the one that headed it up, so I know that he worked a lot of nights on Saturdays. Mr. Gardner, did you want to thank him too? Did I jump again? And so thank you Zach for all, all the extra effort. I know that you worked a lot behind the scenes on this, so I appreciate you and your-
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, I would like to say thank you to everybody that, that was involved, and I know there's a lot of hours put into it, and thank you for your comments. Wonderful. If we could have roll, roll call now.
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Homelow? Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses. All right, one oh five dash, oh, one, one oh five dash twenty-five, emergency amendments to the Standish Town Code, chapter one fifty-one, general assistance ordinance, adopt updated appendices as provided in the Maine Department of Health and Human Services. Whereas new general assistance appendices have been approved, have been provided by Maine Department of Human Services, and whereas certain benefits become effective as of October one, twenty twenty-five, and a delay in adoption could affect the recipients of these benefits, now be it ordered that the updated appendices and provided by the Maine Department of Human Services is hereby adopted as an emergency ordinance, and further order that the town of Standish hereby ordains that the emergency amendments, the general assistance ordinance are effective immediately and stand automatically repealed as of the ninety-first day following its adoption.
Staff comments?
Ruth is our GA assistant and she's not here. It's something that we just housekeeping up adopt every year. She's got a form, it's in the office, if anyone requires assistance, make an appointment or stop by, and there's stuff you have to attach to our GA form, but we're happy, we have a variety of resources to help people.
Public comments? Council comments?
I just got a couple. Minnesvalleys may establish their own maximums, is that true?
Say that again.
Minnesvalleys may establish their own maximum levels of assistance.
I know, we can, so we have a, we have separate systems, so like fuel assistance is here, but we have our own fuel assistance that we get by bottles and cans, so if we can't help someone buy this, we have other avenues that we can access. I don't think we can, we can, I think we can be a little less stringent, but I don't think we can be more stringent than these standards. Again, so we have other programs.
I'm just looking through this and I see zero bedroom, you can get fourteen hundred ninety-six dollars a month, or a zero bedroom place to stay.
Like a studio?
Yeah, I guess. It's not a bad deal, I guess. I might want to build a few of them.
Good. Okay, no, I'm good. Okay?
Can I get clarification on what's meant by automatically repealed after the ninety-first day?
Touch of the mind if I-
Yeah, I'm- So what happens with a-
Oh, yes, I do.
Yeah.
I was going to make out the best one.
Yeah, so-
This one says ninety-first day.
So, so yeah, what happens is, so the next order, one oh six, which is the same thing, just not as an emergency, has to go through three different hearings, so the first one would be introduction now, and then it has to go through a first reading and then a public hearing, so this actually won't be effective till after it's published in December. But we needed to do an emergency order, and most of the emergency orders are repealed after the ninety-first day, because this will then be in effect, so that's kind of why we-
Yeah, agree.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that people understood that it was a two-parter.
Okay.
And then, so this is just for the emergency part. We'll get into the rest of it in the next one. Thank you.
Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Homelow?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Unanimous passes?
One oh six dash twenty-five, amendments to Standish Town Code, chapter one fifty-one, general assistance ordinance, adopt appendices for the maximum levels of assistance as provided by the Maine Department of Health and Human Services. The town of Standish hereby ordains of the following amendments, the general assistance ordinance effective immediately upon adoption. Order that the general assistance ordinance is amended by adopting the appendices for the overall maximum levels of assistance, which includes dollar figures, rates, percentages, and tables, which are determined by the Maine Department of Human Services for use in the general assistance program, are approved by council beginning October first, twenty twenty-five.
Staff comment? None, public comments? Council comments?
I have a few questions.
Okay.
Appendix A. In appendix A, we're under the Portland HMFA, and one person in the household increased sixty-six dollars, two people in the household only increased fifty-eight dollars. Is that normal?
I'd have to look back on last year's, but again, we just follow this. We don't, I'm not sure what was done in the past.
Would this be one of those things that we could adjust?
I would have to check with our GA. I'm not sure, I don't handle the GA.
Okay. Also appendix B, the food maximums went up six dollars a month. There going to be any way to possibly adjust that for people?
I don't think that we generally do that. I do know that we have additional kind of heard vouchers, so if they, I mean, again, it's all private, but if we feel like, or if we get the feeling that they need more, like I know in the past we've done more situationally, situationally based. I can't say every case, though.
All right. And then also the heated versus unheated in appendix C. Heated went up forty dollars for weekly, and unheated went up thirty-four, but there's no change in energy for electricity or fuel. So is that something that I've only looked at last year's? I haven't gone past historically to see if that's common?
Yeah, I would have to ask. I have no idea of the history of it. I also know, again, on those same lines, we have actually residents that will donate wood, donate heaters, so I, again, I know we supplement what's here if it's needed, but again, I don't, I haven't been here long enough to see a pattern of up or down. And I know that Ruth isn't gonna, or any of them who gives GA isn't going to go far from this. I would have to be brought to the council to, to change these norms.
And these are state numbers, these are what we go by, we don't create these numbers or any of this stuff, right? For us to up them or anything like that, I think, I think that we have to basically create and adopt our own program.
And we get reimbursed for what's here, so again, like, we go lower or higher, I mean, I feel like that would be a snowball of problems.
Right. Any other questions? Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Homelow?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Six yeses, one no. Passes. Next.
One oh seven dash twenty-five, confirmation of town manager's appointments for assistant code enforcement officer, building inspector, local plumbing inspector, and electrical inspector. Order that the following town manager's appointments are confirmed by the town council. Seth Gomont, assistant code enforcement officer, which term would expire June thirty, twenty twenty-six. And all of these are for Seth Gomont, he's our new employee, so the next one is building inspector, which term would end June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Local plumbing inspector, term ends June thirty, twenty twenty-six. And electrical inspector, which is open-ended.
Staff comments?
It's housekeeping.
Yep. Any public comments? Council comments?
Just to confirm, this is, this is like the extra person that was budgeted last year, right? We're just very good.
No.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Homelow?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Unanimous passes?
One oh eight dash twenty-five, to change the date of November regular council meeting to November ten, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the regular meeting of Standish Town Council in November is scheduled to happen November eleven, twenty twenty-five, which is the same day as Veterans Day, and whereas the council rules of procedure allow for the date of the meeting to be changed upon vote of the council, now be it ordered that the regular meeting of the Standish Town Council be changed to Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at six P.M., and to be held in the council chambers at the Standish Municipal Center.
Great. We, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and we had decided that the attempt would, instead of putting it off another week or anything like that, the day before Monday worked out really well. If anybody does have any conflicts or anything, feel free to get ahold of me and let me know, and we, I can, we can try to, if we don't have enough for a forum, we can definitely change the date, but, or talk about it tonight too, but if you have any issues. But any public comments on this? Any town council comments? Everybody's good? Everybody's good, so we're willing to pass it.
If there's any conflict, it would be great to talk about it tonight, because you got to do it one month before.
I caught myself, I was talking, that's why I said tonight, yeah. So everybody's good, so roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Homelow?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Okay, so one oh nine dash twenty-five, acceptance of street name MB Lane. Order that the following street name, as submitted by the property owner, is accepted by the town council, as required by the provisions of chapter two fifty-two dash twenty-three of the Standish Town Code. MB Lane, a private road that would be located on tax map twenty, lot thirty-seven dash one, which is off of Shannon's Way, off Chabourne Road, between Nicholas Drive and Rolling Hills Drive.
Any staff comments? Public comments? Council comments?
Quick question.
Yep.
This is just a name change, is it going to affect anything with zoning and all that?
It's not a name change. We don't actually service Shannon's Way or MB, it would be completely private.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Homelow?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
So next up is one ten dash twenty-five, accept resignation from public safety committee member. Order that the resignation of public safety committee member Teresa Kim, submitted on September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, is hereby accepted, effective immediately.
Any public comments? Council comments? Yes.
I'm kind of curious, why does it have to come to the council for someone resigning from the committee? It seems like it's a lot of waste of time for us, because even if we vote not to accept her resignation, she's still going to resign. Unless, maybe we should try that tonight, I'll vote no, and then she can't resign, right? Is that, I mean, I'm just saying, you know? I mean, so why is it waste our time? That's what I'm questioning.
Yeah, it's, it is, right now, I could find it, I could find it, and there's something we could possibly change in the future, but I think it's, I think it's mostly just for acknowledgement, like, just so you're in the know of, but I, I agree, not that anything matters on this.
Let's vote no.
I mean, we would definitely like to thank Teresa for her service. She's, I'm sure she did a wonderful job and has her reasons for stepping down and needing to go do other things, but, can we have a roll call?
It's Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes, I think the chair should write a nice letter for her all the time she's putting.
I hear you.
And Deacon?
Yes.
Homelow?
No.
And Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Six yeses, one no. Passes. All right, that concludes new things. We're going to move on to public items. Is there any public items out there? Questions? None, I see none.
I'll make a comment if I may. There is an election coming up in November, there is some statewide, there is some statewide ballot measures, I encourage people to participate in the election and go online, get information about the ballot questions. I urge everyone to vote, and then you can register at the polls. Thank you.
Thanks for that. I don't, seeing no, no announcements, and, uh, no executive session tonight, so looking for somebody that we'd like to adjourn?
May I?
Sorry.
Second?
Good.
All in favor? We are adjourned, thank you for coming on out.
Thank you.
I'm having the opportunity.